Okay, let's begin. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2023 meeting of the Ry Brook Zoning Board of Appeals. With us this evening, we have four of the five members. Still, Steve Burgert does have some personal issues with his family out of state, so he'll be excused, which means that any application to be heard has the option of moving it to the February meeting, in which case we heard we'll have one person abstaining, and we don't know whether we'll have four or three. It's an unfortunate thing, we don't know at this time. But you will have that option at any time before or during your application to request postponement to the next meeting. We also have village council Drew Gammels, border trustees liaison David Heiser. Fred Seifert is bringing you video. And we have building inspector and fire inspector Mickey Izzo. I'd like to start out this meeting by acknowledging the service to this board and to many others for Mickey Izzo. This is going to be his last formal meeting as building inspector. He'll be retiring after two decades of more, two decades or more of glorious service. He's been an exceptional help to me in terms of interpretation and mentoring, especially in the early days, and I'm sure other members of the board feel the same. So we acknowledge that and thank him for all the help he's given us. You may see him again, but he'll be in the supportive role and not necessarily making the final decisions. With us this evening, we have three, actually, we have many applications, but three different applicants. The first one is item number, new code, ZBA A22-036 adjourned from December 6th. Brian Gregg, 10 Jennifer Lane, construct a two, a second story addition over the garage. Who's going to be making the presentation? Thank you.
Hi, John G. Scelato Jr., the architect for the Greggs. They're in the audience.
Oh, Don, make sure you use your mic.
What?
Your microphone.
Oh. Use your microphone. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we were here last month, and for the dormer addition over the garage, that was going to create two bedrooms and a half a bath and a stairway. And we were asked to go back and see if we can sharpen our pencils and reduce it. So we did, we went back, we sharpened it. We actually eliminated the bathroom. We moved the location of the stairway to eliminate as much as we could of the left side dormer. So we did do that, and we removed 122 square feet from our application. So that's, this is the outside. So that's the side. Change the window so furniture could fit better.
Jen? Drew?
Yes.
I have only one page.
Oh, it's front and back.
Oh, oh, which was saving. Okay.
Goodness.
Front and back, I'm so impressed.
I know, that gets confusing, the front and back.
Yeah. Look, it's a record, the first time in 15 years I saw a front and back.
That just tells you times are getting tough, huh?
So you're looking for a variance now of 500 as opposed to 650, or is that?
Yes, we originally were asking for 650 over what we have, and now we're only asking for 528 over what we had. And in floor plan...
John, remind me, you're doing this all within the current space, right?
Exactly. The garage has the A-frame.
Right.
We're not changing the footprint, we're just dormering out the side of the A-frame. So the ridge is staying, the front elevation, the back elevation is staying. The dormer is kind of pushed back two feet from each side. So we located the stairway now next to the fireplace where the roof is higher, and we kind of reduced the hallway, and we got rid of the bathroom. So our addition is only now in this section, really where the dormer is, and this little teeny piece to get up there. So the rest of it, we left the way it was.
Given that diagram, where have you taken things away from, given that reference point?
Okay, we've taken out our addition of all in this area of the house.
Okay.
We kind of tightened it, so we've eliminated that whole portion. So the only part of that part now we're doing is basically the five foot width to get up there.
So nothing has been reduced from the size of the bedrooms?
I think the size of the bedrooms, the hallway cut into it, so they're probably slightly smaller, or at least this one is, because the hallway used to be over further.
What are the dimensions of the two rooms now?
Okay, so the back bedroom's 14 by 15, and the front bedroom's 15 by 14, but it's got the hallway cutting in. So it's really, at its widest parts, 15 by 14. But then you have to say it's really more like 10 in here, because the hallway's cutting through it.
Make the case for your client as to why you couldn't reduce it even more, which is going to be, obviously, you know that was going to be my question, so there it is.
Because we needed bedrooms that were kind of reasonable size to fit two people, and they gave up the support of having the bathroom on that level, so using those two bedrooms, they have to go downstairs to the bathroom. They feel like they have enough bathrooms, they didn't really need another bathroom, but they really need more bedroom space. So that's where we took it. We shrunk, you know, the part of the house that we felt we didn't need, but the bedrooms, we really felt still needed to be a decent size. So shrinking them really becomes, like, if we make them 12 feet versus 14, I'm not quite sure anybody's going to notice the difference.
Do you have the photographs accessible on the computer? Can you just give us the front view again of the house as it is?
And John, when you say for two people, are you talking about two people per room?
No, two, no.
Two bedrooms.
No, no, I didn't say that, but he said...
One for each kid.
So, okay.
One for their, one, of each of their sons would get one. Okay, so that's the front of the house.
Okay, now, facing that, where, exactly, what are you doing now?
All right, so there's a small...
Above the garage?
A small dormer in here, right? In theory. And, if I get the other side. Now, on this side of the house, we're doing the dormer, you know, two feet back, two feet back. I don't want to clear it, I got the old one off, right? So this side of the house, we're basically doing a dormer in here, right? So it's keeping the ridge where it is, straight wall, shallow pitched roof. So the front of the house stays totally the way it is, and then you just have the shingled side dormer.
Now, the back, you're facing Crawford Park?
We're facing Crawford Park.
So there's nobody looking at that?
Other than the people in the park.
Exactly. Squirrels. Now, from the front, what will the streetscape, how will the streetscape be affected?
Well, I mean, the streetscape is going to look like, well, I mean, my streetscape is going to look like my drawing. It's going to be, so, I mean, the way the house is now in the front, like, it's pronounced with the A-frame.
It's very, it's a very tight area, you know, that's why I'm trying to get a handle on.
Well, I mean, I mean, if you're looking at this, we're, there's going to be just setback. My computer, that's not going to work. Right, so if you're looking at this, there's just a slate, you know, there's a shallow pitched roof line, and, you know, shingle setback, right? So that's, that's really where your impact's going to be. This one's considerably back, and it's just for the stairway.
Right.
So that one's, and that's actually right next to the chimney. So that one's going to go away, it's really behind the tree. So, I mean, as far as the look of the house, I don't think anybody's going to notice it really changed, because we're not changing the footprint. The front's really keeping its, the same look it has, and this is kind of just enhancing it. So I don't think from the road, people are going to realize it really got bigger.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any...
No, I think if you do this project, I don't think the bedrooms could really be any smaller, because again, you need, you know, a certain modest size. So I don't know, I don't know, other than what's been done, how it could be reduced further.
Yeah, that's why one of our factors is, you know, the smallest variance that will meet the needs.
I didn't realize this house has no basement. The boiler room counts, I mean, everything in this house counts in its FAR. So it has, you know, it has that horribleness that there's no free space, so...
You can actually put that in a can and a tape recorder and play that, because that's one of your favorite phrases.
There you go. I got a lot of the houses that have other options.
Mine included, but I mean...
You're, you're, yep, you live in one of those two years.
You do use, you do use that quite often, and I think you could save time by putting in a little phrase and shooting that in.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with Joel, though. I'm not sure that, that the bedrooms, if you want to go to the least variance, that the bedrooms couldn't be smaller. There are a lot of bedrooms that are, I know tiny, eight by 10, more of a den, 11 by 12. That's not an insignificant bedroom. I'm not saying it's a master, but, but if you're talking about the smallest...
Well, I mean, you could have a closet, technically.
But, but if you've seen a lot of third and fourth bedrooms in houses, they are smaller than these two rooms.
That's my, that's my only reservation at this point, given what, you know, what has been done.
Right.
That is the only reservation I have.
Well, I was just mentioning it because Joel had a different viewpoint, so I was just... And I'm not saying I disagree with Joel, I'm just saying, I think it's, it's, it could be smaller if it's something that really was a concern for us as a board.
I'm just going to say, I think anything could always be smaller, but I think the size that it's being utilized is a reasonable size, and I don't think it could be said it's extravagant in any way. That's just my take on it.
Could, you said that Mr. Gregg is in the audience?
Yes.
Oh, can you please come forward and...
Sure.
Make the case to satisfy Glenn why you need that size bedrooms.
Brian Gregg, 10 Jennifer Lane, Ry Brook, New York. Well, my son, who's here now, is in a room that's 10 by 11. He's been in since he's born, and it's just too small. And he doesn't even have a closet in that room. And I still, in those rooms, I still have to build, you know, put closets in them too. But even my, John, I don't know if John said it, but I don't think so, but my, both neighbors on both sides, even the guy with the dormer, both wrote letters saying they don't see a problem with it, they're fine with it. They don't believe it's going to cause any problems with anybody. So there are, both neighbors on both sides of me have no problem. They wrote letters.
But they're not living there forever, and I think that one of the considerations that we have is that there'll be someone new moving in another time, and I'm assuming your neighbors like you. And, and so, so, so many times, you'll get approval from neighbors because they want to be good neighbors, or they sometimes don't want to say anything to the contrary.
Oh, I'm good to everybody around me.
But, no, no, I completely understand. So, and, you know, the other thing I kind of wanted to mention, as you're going to, you know, explain why this is necessary, is that, New Year, I've been thinking a little bit, and, and more to the board, is that COVID's kind of almost over, but it's not. And, and as we've known for the last three years, people have been moving back more and more, more family, I understand, more workplace. And I was just thinking, should we be concerned that this is becoming a board, zoning board issue for us to approve some of these things when maybe it's got to be the town that starts to consider some of these variances? Because, you know, I said, with more and more people coming home, we're kind of, we're the ones that are saying, okay, okay, but the zoning regulations in the town don't really allow it.
Well, that's the point, it's not a question of the town allowing the variances, it's the question of town changing the zoning rules.
Right, right, and I, right, and I'm just...
So you don't need the variance.
Right, right, and I'm just thinking, we've kind of become the...
Flash, it's the flashpoint for this situation.
Well, that's why you're here.
Right, exactly.
To save us.
To save us from the elected officials, right?
To save us. Well, you know what? We, we did away with that whole, I mean, you got the one dormer on one side. We had another dormer on the other side that was half of that. We did away with that whole thing. All we got is just a little five-foot dormer, just with a spiral staircase, so they could get up there. They're not in their 60s, they don't need to get up there in the night to go to the bathroom, so... They can get up in the morning, hold it, and walk down as far as I'm concerned.
And you want to remind us that you have no basement.
I have no basement. I have, I got the boiler room, the hot water tank, staircase, I mean, it's just, there's no room. No basement, I have no attic, I have nothing. So like, everybody's room is just packed with everything.
They don't want to share a bedroom?
Oh, that ain't never going to happen. Never going to happen. I'd have to be their refereeing 24 hours a day. I'm getting too old for refereeing.
The, you know, the points that were brought up are extremely valid.
I understand that.
When I first moved into the village, well, it was the town, unincorporated area of the town in the mid 70s, and somehow the families, they, many of them had five and six children, and they were able to fit into the houses that have subsequently been blown, the doors have been blown off or leveled and been replaced by larger, larger homes. So culturally, there's been a shift in terms of what people want or need or feel they need in a house in Ry Brook. It's not the same as it was when I first moved here. So we, as a zoning board, are facing that dynamic, that people want, they want to have an en suite, they want to have an entertainment room, they want to have an exercise room.
I don't have any of that.
And now they also want to have a workroom, as was brought out, so...
I'm done working.
Clearly, clearly, the village needs to think about, and I don't know how long it will take to act if they decide, but they definitely have to think about revisiting, you know, the, the needs of the population today, based on the comprehensive plan that we've been following, you know, along the way. But we're getting more and more applications where people say, our current house, I love Ry Brook, I don't want to move, and therefore I need to blow the doors off and expand. Your case is particularly unique, because you've been before the zoning board and had several variances beforehand. So you've been successively expanding, expanding, expanding.
My family's grown and grown and grown. Nobody's leaving.
Exactly, exactly. Well, that's, that's the other dynamic.
It's like back in the day, you know, everybody lived at home, all the whole family never left. Everybody was there, and that's where I'm at.
My son, my son moved out when he was 18, and my wife still hasn't forgiven me for forcing him out at 18.
I'd toss them all out, they know it, but my wife will kill me.
But he came back, he came back 10 years later and resided in our house. So there are many dynamics, and we are unfortunately are the ones that are adjudicating most of these, but there's a pattern here. And I think the village needs to think about.
I agree.
Think about, you know, lot sizes, what they can expect in a particular property, because Ry Brook is made up of many, many different neighborhoods. One of the applications later on today, you know, I couldn't find a sign on the front lawn because there was so much parking on the street. Then you go to other areas where you have an R25 zone, and, you know, you have one and two acre lots. So the village is made up a lot of different areas, but I think in many respects, the nature of the population of Ry Brook has changed, and...
In the meantime, we have to deal with the hand we're dealt.
That's right, and that's why we...
That's why you're here, to help.
That's why there was pushback last time from the board. I came into the meeting tonight not totally convinced that I should approve the variance. However, I modified that because of the bathroom being removed. You know, I think you've gone quite a ways to try to meet the concerns of the board.
We did, we lost that whole dormer over there and the bathroom.
Exactly. So if your sons are still there when they're in their 60s, you know, maybe you can work out...
Yeah, they're not leaving.
Maybe, maybe you could work out...
They're going to bury us, and they're going to just party up. They're not going to leave. They're hardworking kids, they're going to probably stay there the rest of their life.
But what happens if they're not there for that long? I mean, I know that we can't...
I don't think any of us is...
I know, I know, we can't, we can't predict, but if we grant the variance, you've now added a second variance and added two bedrooms. Your family hopefully expands, but they move out.
I have five bedrooms, it's not that...
Right, well, but for this house and the zoning, it is. So, so, and I think anyone saying a five-bedroom house anywhere is a big plus, I would think.
A one-bedroom's really small.
So, okay, so I'm just saying, so we have to think of the variance that stays with the house forever, and your son, handsome as he is, will probably be married and move out, maybe. So, so what happens then? You know, do we not think about that, that in a year, that, that this variance that's granted because of this temporary situation, which may or may not be, stays forever?
I'm going to 100, I mean.
Well...
The issue is, we have to resolve this on the basis of the five factors.
Right, right.
And we have to sort of put a firewall between Mr. Gregg's unique situation and the fact that this, this house is far larger than anything the, the town in their wisdom ever thought should be in that zoning district. That's, that's our balance, balancing test that we have to do. And it's never easy, but, you know, we always hear the reasons and we ask the...
All you're really going to see is that little front piece of the dormer sticking off the right side. That's pretty much it. But like I said, I don't have a basement, I don't have an attic. Picture yourself without a basement and attic. You can't put stuff outside in a shed, because everything molds and gets bugs and... I have no, I don't have the room. So by doing this, the one room that's there, I'm going to make that into a storage room. I have to, I have no, you know, there's stuff everywhere.
All right, well, thank you for coming up and...
Thank you, and like I said, as time goes on, you know, things, modern stuff, it's going on and on. It's, things are getting more difficult and crowded, and it is, you know, it's progress, I guess, I don't know. All right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to acknowledge the fact that we have a couple of letters of support from the neighbors that was alluded to earlier in terms of speaking for the application. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak for the application? Okay. Anyone, are you equivocating, or?
No, I'm, listen, I'm too stupid to say anything. It's just that I feel...
No, if you're going to speak at all, you need to come and introduce yourself.
I don't know what to say, whether to...
First introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Bella Gregg, it's Brian's wife. I really don't know what to say, other than what exactly that John is saying and Brian's saying, and that we shedded to the best that we could. It's not going to change the look of the house. No one on that street, the way they go whipping up and down, is even going to notice it. They're not even going to stop, and they're going to look. He keeps the house nicely groomed, the landscape, everybody stops and talks to him, and is always commenting. I don't think, and I'm not holding my sons back, but at this day and age right now, they aren't leaving, and they're not leaving. And if the Corona hit everyone hard, and it's going to keep hitting everyone hard, they need to be stable before they're going anywhere. I'm not leaving the house, he's not leaving the house, my daughter is still 17, she's not leaving the house. My sons aren't leaving the house, and it is just a bedroom big enough for them, a little bigger than what, you know, they have now, just so that they can feel comfortable and be happy. They're not, you know what I'm saying? There's, it's still part of the house. The stairs is right there. We're not doing anything over and beyond, and that's going to make it like, there's houses on the street. If everybody wants to do something to their house, or an addition, or a dormer, or a driveway, then they have to do the proper channels that we're doing as well. You may get somebody else, you may not get somebody else. But if they don't give it a shot and come before the board, then they're not going to know if they're going to want to build. It's, you really can't just pick up and move and go anywhere else. It's really not affordable, it's not even affordable here. But once you're here, you have to stay here right now, and that's where we are all staying. I'm not leaving, you know, I, my daughter's still in the school, I'm a part of Ridge Street School. I worked there, but right now had an injury, I had major surgery. I'm not leaving anywhere. You know, I need a little extra help, they've been helping me too. I'm not in any position to get up and move now, five years, 10 years, we're not. We're not moving. And I don't think that they're moving anytime now. And even if they did, it's not like we're, I don't know what we would do. Maybe it would just be storage or whatever. We have so much stuff around the place, we don't have a basement, we don't have any other storage. We have no storage, no storage at all. And if this means that my stuff is just either thrown out or whatever, and they have their room set, then I will throw out my stuff that's in there right now and get rid of it. Turn my eyes and just get rid of it, if it makes them happy and they have their own room. That's all we're looking for. That is actually the only thing we're looking for. We're not looking for anyone to be bigger here, it's not, you're not even going to notice it. You're going to drive by it, like John said. And probably, those people aren't even going to notice it. You know how fast they go up and down that street? Everybody does work on that street. They do different things, as long as you come before the board and you're explaining, and this is it, you know, that's what we're looking to do. We're not looking to sell it, we're not looking to do, we're looking to probably die in the house. Not literally, but...
Together.
Die in the house, together.
We're going together.
With my kids, which I'm sure...
We're together 43 years.
Listen, we're a very close family, very knit close, and you know what? My son is 31. Nobody's got a noose on his neck to leave, and he made it quite clear, he's not leaving. So, and my other son, if he's not leaving, that's great, and they have a better room, they're all, you know, they don't have to worry about it. There's no storage. I can't even walk around his room now, I don't even want to, I'm going to close my eyes, I'm afraid I'm going to fall. And I really don't want to fall again. I had a very bad, very bad year.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, me too, I feel sorry for myself for once.
One, it's not always what it looks like is for the reason. The second thing is, you should have led, you should have never come up, and you'd be fine. No, I'm kidding. Thank, thank you. Thank you for your impassioned speech.
Thank you.
I'm going to say something that's very, very unpopular. We can't consider that as we look at a variance application. The state has told us that we have a balancing test to make and to use five specific factors, and passion isn't one of them. Promises to be here forever don't count, because we have been lied to on numerous occasions by people. We're not as passionate as you were, but basically said, we're going to be here forever because we love Ry Brook. And you see for sale signs go up. They got their variance, the house was more marketable, and they sold it. So we have to be human, but we also have to follow certain objective criteria. I think, I think John made a very strong case. He went back to the drawing board, made changes. You made compromises in what you originally wanted and what you're putting forth before the board now. But, you know, we can't rely on promises. We basically have to rely on the facts before us and see if we can accommodate reasonable requests on the part of the population for relief against the bulk standards that the village has put before us. Having said that, being close to the Christmas Grinch, you know, I, you know, I hated to have to say that, but I really did, because you did make a strong, passionate case. But we do have to reflect on the things that are before us, the five factors. And so, once we close the public hearing, we're going to go over the five factors, and you will hear us as we deliberate those five factors toward the application that you put forth. There being no negative, I'm assuming no negative responses, a motion to close the public hearings.
I'm a second.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, you heard the, the materials. As I said, my only concern was that there was previous variances. This is oversized for the zoning district that it's in. Let me go through the factors, get your take on them, and then your summary feelings. Do you feel the variance will create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood? Based on what you heard? No? I concur. The benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. How do you feel about that?
I would agree with you.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Okay, it has nothing to do with the size of it, it just has to do with, okay, I concur. Three, the variance is quantitatively substantial.
Yes.
But not aesthetically substantial, agree? Agree? I agree. The variance will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. We have not heard anything about water or any other issues of that nature, other than mold was brought up. I concur. The need for the variance is self-created. Okay, comfortable with that?
Yeah. They had kids.
Okay. All right, then, let me read the, read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board by Brian Gregg, the applicant for gross floor area variance of 528 square feet, where the maximum allowable gross floor area is 3,186.44 square feet, as granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on application number 7-490, in connection with the proposed second story addition over garage on property located at 10 Jennifer Lane in an R10 zoning district on the north side of Jennifer Lane, approximately 100 feet from the intersection of Lee Lane and Jennifer Lane, said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the Village of Ry Brook as parcel ID number 135 dot 58 dash 1 dash 3, whereas the zoning board granted the applicant a gross floor area variance of 376 square feet on February 5th, 2008, in connection with the application 07490, where the maximum allowable gross floor area was 2,690.92 pursuant to Village Code. Okay, there's a little mess up there. And whereas the applicant proposed second story addition will result in a gross floor area of 3,717.44 square feet, whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on December 6th, 2022, and continued to January 3rd, 2023, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on January 3rd, 2023. Whereas the proposed action is a type 2 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board, from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth at Section 250 dash 13, Section G, Part 2, Items 2A through E of the Ry Brook Code fines, the variance will not create any adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. Three, the variance is quantitatively numerically substantial, but not aesthetically substantial. The variance will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created.
Don, I'm gonna stop you there for a second, just wanna point out, I think the application number being referenced in the, is not, is not accurate.
Earlier.
The application number, the 07 one, it just references, that created a, that was a variance granted that increased what they were permitted to have in 2008. Yeah, so that, that's just, they're not, they're not being held to the regular code, they're being held to what their variance was.
Okay, good. Now therefore be it resolved that said application, of what they're asking for, is hereby provisionally granted under the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Steve is excused, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don? Yes, okay, application is approved, four yeses, zero nays, one excused. I would also mention with respect to this application that reference was made to other people on the street who might wanna do things to come before the board. I caution everybody, that's the right way to do it, not to do it, and then ask for indulgences later on, after you've done something. That is not the way it's supposed to work. Thank you again, good luck with the application, and we'll move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks for the warning.
Did you watch Yellowstone?
Not yet, but.
No?
I got, we're waiting for the two. Don't say any more, if you tell me anymore, I'm gonna change my vote.
Thank you so much, and it's true, everybody's just getting bigger, families are expanding. It's like the old days, everybody's staying home. Who's gonna leave when it's free? I wouldn't.
Don, in 1972, you should have put the addition on your house, because you could have done a lot bigger.
I know. In 1972, I was living in the Bronx. Okay.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Happy New Year.
Doing this and helping people, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. The next application is ZB, ZBA 21 dash 035, adjourned from December 6th, 2022. Jan Zisslis and Janice Zisslis, 15 Woodland Drive. Legalize filter and heater equipment placement associated with building permit number 20 dash 125, issued on 7/24/2020, to extend rear patio with new stone walls, fireplace, hot tub, and construct new roof over existing outdoor patio. Mickey, if I can indulge you, could you just amplify what the issues are in this, with this application?
While Mickey gets his materials ready, I just wanna add, it says adjourned, but we did not open the public hearing. They, they adjourned it last meeting, so they did not appear before this board.
Right. Is that a signage issue or?
Believe it was the mailing of the notices.
Oh, okay, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the thrust, the thrust of the application is the filters and the heater and the pump and so forth. It was constructed six feet from the property line, where the code requires a 10-foot setback for pool equipment.
Okay, and what did the, what did the plans specify?
Let me check.
Was there a survey also submitted at that time with the plans?
Yes, a survey is submitted before work ensues, and then an as-built survey is required after this type of construction takes place.
Okay, and reference what the plans specify.
The equipment is not shown on the plans.
That's interesting.
I don't think it ever showed it, but the issue with, with the equipment is it's, it's off the rear yard setback, right? The six feet, not the side yard?
Well, it's regardless of rear or side, it's a 10-foot setback that's required.
If we were 10 feet on the side yard, we'd be closer to actually houses. But because they opted to put it near the shed in the backyard and went too far, the setback's against a rear yard, so we're nowhere near, they're nowhere near a house, or actually further from houses being in the rear yard than they would have been if they were 10 feet away.
That's got, that's got nothing to do with it. The code says 10 feet, whether you're on top of the house or not, it's supposed to be 10 feet from a property line. So the fact that it's closer or further from a home is incidental.
You, you alluded to the fact that a decision was made. Obviously, a decision was made, and, and that's why I'm asking, is it, was it on the plan? If it was on the plan, it would have been picked up as being a zoning violation. The fact that it wasn't on the plan, someone decided that we're gonna put it where it is. And I'm trying to find out how that happened.
And it does make you wonder, as the opposition letter notes, whether this was, was an intentional, let's do this and then ask for forgiveness later, which we, we've all seen too many times.
When, John, when was the shed put up?
I don't know, they're on our, 10 years ago?
So the shed appears on the survey?
The shed is not on the survey that was submitted with the application, that, that survey is from 07. So sometime between 07 and 2021, a shed was installed on the property.
Legally, I mean, in the proper location?
Well, it's, it is, it is located properly for.
An accessory building.
And, well, I would have to scale the, scale the plan. If it's less than 10, than, than 10 by 12, then it is legal.
Okay. So when this addition was put on, you know, the, the.
Right, we did the patio, we did the patio, the kitchen, and the hot tub.
Right, okay. The shed was there?
I believe it was.
And so, at that point, somebody decided, let's put this equipment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I wasn't involved in the exact.
But you're the architect.
Yeah, but then when the pool person comes in and does your pool stuff, they obviously thought it was far enough away. But they chose to put it in the rear as opposed to on the side. So although it's too close to the setback, it's not like it's close to houses.
Who is they?
Whoever put the hot tub in.
May I?
Yeah.
May I approach the question? I, I will try to refrain from my passion and stick to the, to the facts. Let me just put it into context, this was during the fall of 2020, which was basically, you know, COVID, height of COVID. I'm an emergency room physician, so I was quite busy in the ER during that time, and I may not have been paying attention as close as I, I should have been. The general contractor for this project was Chris Skelfa, who couldn't be here tonight, so I am speaking in his stead. The pool contractor, so he, Chris basically was in charge of the project. Chris was working with a pool contractor that was not from the area. He was actually based out of Long Island. His assumption, and perhaps the assumption was incorrect, was that since the shed was in that location, he would abut the, the pool equipment adjacent to the shed, being as, as the most inconspicuous area for pool equipment from, from a visual perspective and from a noise perspective, from a sound perspective, because it would, it would be shielded by the shed, plus the rear yard is basically woods, more than 20 feet of woods before you get to the neighbor's yard. And it was only after the, the final survey was, was made that it was discovered that the pool equipment was in violation by four feet. The intention was absolutely not to build it and ask for forgiveness later. That was not the intention at all. I actually have, I have pictures, if you guys would like to take a look. So if you, if you take a look at where the shed is and the pool equipment, behind the pool equipment is basically wooded area.
Were these part of the submission? So I don't, I don't know if you need to see.
They, they were not.
They were not, okay.
So.
You could say that it was not intentional, but one might also say it was, dare I say, negligent, not to, you know, if it wasn't intentional, you know, it's almost as bad in terms of.
Understood, and not to place blame on anybody. But as, as a homeowner, when I hire a, a general contractor to oversee the project, whether it's the homeowner's fault versus the, the GC's fault, you, you could argue that it was negligent, but again, I would say it was more of an oversight than negligence.
Chris has been in this town a long, long.
Right, which is why I really thought that we were in compliance with the, the town regulations.
And do you see where it would be difficult for us to be able to rely on a homeowner saying, my builder did this? Because it puts us in a bad position and reminds me of, of the case when they built on, I forget, it was that yellow house with the patio and the contractor gave them extra pavers? And, and with the shed, and he said he didn't know and he blamed it on the builder. And I said, because I would never accuse anybody, but I said, I would like to find a builder, and I remember saying this, that would give us extra material, extra labor, and not charge for it? And doesn't even tell you, you got extra? So, you know, in nicest as a way I could, you question that. So it, it, from my perspective, it becomes challenging to blame everybody but the homeowner who has the ultimate responsibility for where this is, even if it's not your fault.
And I, I accept that responsibility. I, I accept, I mean, and I'm not placing, I, I, I love Chris, and he has been in the town, and he knows the rules and regulations, and, you know, it was surprising to me once we got the, the disapproval. So, you know, subsequently, we approached all of the neighbors on all three sides of our property. And by the way, to your point earlier, where, you know, you're sort of friendly with your neighbors, I don't know the neighbors behind me. And they had absolutely no issue with the location and the placement of the, of the pool equipment, and on either side of me as well, both from a visual perspective and from a, a noise perspective.
Yeah, this would kind of be a project where it probably would not affect a neighbor, right? And, and we get a number of those, but it still is violative of the zoning. So, so even with this not affecting a neighbor.
Understood.
It's still, it's still kind of an issue. And it makes sense where it would go, because the shed is there. But he should have, you know, to avoid all this, come in earlier and ask, or move the shed a little bit, which is not that expensive, and just, just to get it in. So again, it becomes a challenge. And the letter, as, as one of my colleagues said, you know, unfortunately, we're seeing a lot more of the, it's better to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission. And, and, you know, the timing may be bad for you, but we're seeing that more and more, and I think that's becoming an issue for us.
Let me ask you a question in addition, is there, nationally, is there any reason, other than you don't want to, that it couldn't be moved to the proper location?
So the, the answer is, it could be. I mean, anything could be done for, you know, for whatever price, right? So it, it's, it's quite a challenge from a labor perspective. There are gas lines, there's a gas line that's going underneath that area to the, to the heater. I actually have pictures of the amount of labor that it actually took to, to get it to that location, and, and what it would take to actually, to move the table.
They want to speak to Chris about that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure Chris would come by.
Yeah, so, and there's quite a bit of plumbing that's involved, I mean, it's, it's not an insignificant task.
I mean, I'm just saying, while they look at the photos, I'm, I'm just thinking, I understand. You had nothing to do with it, it happened, so let it lay. And, and I think that, well, I understand that position, and I would argue that from you. You know, as a lawyer, I would say, who's right? And the answer I always say is, depends who's paying me. So, so the, you know, the other argument is, from our perspect, not argument, but from our perspective again, becomes, this just becomes just another, okay, you know. Okay, you know, they get away with it. And again, I don't mean that in a disparaging way, but, but you get your variance because... And, and I think it might really set a bad precedent for us to, to do that. You know, I don't know how other people feel, but it's, it's really is a concern that we're seeing this more and more. And, and if we grant it, then what happens to the next, you know? Do we then draw a line in the sand later? I know everyone is meticulous, so maybe people feel differently than I do. But, but I, I, I do have a concern that it's, I'll just ask for permission kind of thing. And that, and that's what we're seeing a lot of.
Mick, I have a question for you. Is it common that when you do these kind of projects to not have the equipment on a plan?
Well, generally speaking, Jamie, when you, when you have a hot tub, and this is speaking from my own, and I'm not making an excuse for myself, but this is the way I... You know, when I see a hot tub on, on a plan, I guess wrongfully so, I automatically assume that the equipment is part and parcel of the hot tub. Nine times out of 10, you're going to see a hot tub and the equipment is like under it or in it or, you know. So I didn't see any equipment on the plan, so I guess that's what I assumed moving forward. Now, I've learned from that mistake and I'll, I'll, I'll never make that mistake again as long as I'm the building inspector here. I can pretty much guarantee you that.
What, do you have two days to make that mistake?
There's no hot tub, so...
Yeah, yeah. So, so the village can rest easy knowing that I'm, I'm on the job. But generally speaking, that's, that's what I... So I, I wasn't surprised that I didn't see, you know, some sort of detached pool equipment because it isn't really a pool, it's a hot tub. And so...
You could have memo to self slash Steve. In, in the future, when a hot tub comes before the board, you know, make sure.
But if it were pool, if it was a pool?
Oh, yeah.
Most definitely, that's SOP, yeah.
All right. How far, how far is the hot tub spa from this shed where the equipment is?
About 30 feet.
So obviously, there was a choice to move it as far away from the house as you could so it's not near the house. I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a cost to move it as opposed to putting it right there to begin with.
Right. The, the decision to put it in the back was made with consideration to my neighbor on the side.
By?
By placing it...
No, by whom?
By whom? Uh, by...
You said the decision was made for relief of the neighbor...
Myself.
By a human.
Myself and, and Chris.
Okay. So there's joint, joint decision-making, right?
Correct.
Part of my concern, and, and I totally, totally share Glenn's, is if John came before us with that kind of faux pas, he'll never be the same person standing before us in a zoning board because it's not the kind of thing that a trained architect in Ry Brook should ever do, make that kind of, of faux pas. A general contractor, again, extremely experienced. And as a, as a point of information, I have hired Chris Skelfo to work on my house with permits, with permits, with inspections, okay? And since I'm on the zoning board, I said, Chris, make sure everybody does everything the right way. I can't afford the embarrassment. Now, when you bring in a contractor from another area, okay? A flag should go up. And you, you take the person aside and you say, you know, Ry Brook has certain quirky rules. Let's call him quirky because people have come before us and said, what a pain it is to do business in Ry Brook because, so anyway. So you would say, just make sure you do this right, okay? And he should have also communicated to you that you're really taking a chance on putting it there.
There's no doubt that had that information been known to Chris and myself, we would have absolutely moved it four feet forward. There would have been no question about it. It wasn't that we were taking a chance by moving it as far back as we could. It would have been a, a, a non-issue.
But the GC, you said Chris is the GC of this?
Correct.
He's, he's got to be responsible for this. And, and, and again, he's been here and doing this for so long. And, and as Don said, you know, when you know the area... Now, I would say John is very talented. And he's here every month. And I don't think he's here every month because he is the best architect in the world. No offense. He's here because everyone uses him, word of mouth, reputation. If you want something, my neighbor is using John. Why? He knows the neighborhood. He knows. And, and, and that's why you see that handsome face every month. And, and so to Don's point, it, it, it's troubling, you know, that even, you know, so an out of... And again, this is not the first out of county contractor we've had where there's been an issue. And I, I think Chris would know, you know? And so either he, he, so one of two things happened. He either didn't pay attention, put his head in the sand on purpose, or he just put his head in the sand in a, not a bad way, and said, this guy knows what he's doing, it's there. You know, I'm not saying there's, there's any deceit at all. It's, but someone needs to take responsibility.
So I, I might also add, if you look at, at the photo that illustrates the pool equipment, the, the actual wooded area, uh, the property line is quite ambiguous, you know? So perhaps he measured what he thought was the property line 10 feet and, and made a mistake. So I, I, I don't know. But obviously, I hired John and I hired Chris because I know that the job would be done right legally.
Right. But we don't, we, again, we don't know why the mistake was made either.
And I'm going to go a step or two further in that if this was the type of variance where there was, there was a need for the, for the work being done, it couldn't, like the, like the last one we had this evening, where it can't, it can't be done without a variance in place, we try to work with the situation. This one bluntly strikes me as a scenario where it can be fixed, it should be fixed. One of the five factors, picking up on what Joe just said, one of the five factors, and I'll read it. The benefit the applicants seek can or cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicants to pursue that does not require the variance. Now, when you tunnel the ground to put the piping in, the gas lines and, and electrical lines to get to that location, you, you had to do all that work, that initial work. Now, the alternative, the only alternative, if you want to maintain the hot tub and rectify the, I don't know, is malfeasance the appropriate word? Somebody screwed up.
A mistake.
Mistake.
Faux pas, let's put it that way.
The faux pas, yeah, a nice way of saying that. Then the way to correct it is going to incur a liability to someone. One method is to incur the cost of moving that to, to comply and request that the decision maker be responsible for that. Now, I don't know if I would blame Chris as a general contractor. I'd blame the pool person. If it's a reputable firm that goes across all counties, you don't do something like that without checking the law, without checking the bulk standards. It's common, okay? It's common to do that. People who put in, uh, what do they call them, sports courts? They have to comply, they check. They're national organizations, they're regional organizations, they do this kind of thing. A fly-by-night operation comes along and says, I'll pave your driveway for you. You know, you get what you pay for. A reputable firm should, one of the things they have to do is get permits for what they do. So before that person does anything, they say to the GC, what permitting is required in order to, to put this equipment in? And at that point, the awareness is, this is what has to be done, and it's done, okay? The only way that is not done is if the permit, the person is sloppy, okay? Ignorant, all right? Or willfully putting it there. Either one of those are non-forgivable, in my estimate. They're non-forgivable.
Yeah, but Don, I just want to say, I'm not saying Chris or anybody did anything wrong. I'm saying in a hierarchy, there's got to be a chain. And at the end of the day, it is the homeowner. And I'm saying if Chris is overlooking this, then Chris is responsible. And if he's overlooking somebody, it's him. I'm, I didn't blame Chris. I'm not saying that...
I don't know who...
Right, right, I don't know. I'm just saying...
Somebody along the line messed up.
Right, right. I just want to make that clear.
It's not relevant for our purposes.
But who brought that, the, uh, person in? I mean, isn't it the general contractor?
But again, that's not, that's not our issue really.
No, I know, but...
The, the way I look at it is, I want you to have your spa. I live around the corner, I walk by your house every day when that was being constructed. I stopped and I talked to Chris Skelfo every day he was there. I saw his truck. I said, hi, Chris, how you doing? Did you move to North Carolina? No, I'm staying in Florida because my wife likes Florida. I've had those conversations. So he was there, all right? And he knows, he knows the rodeo. So all I'm saying is, you can have your spa, all you got to do is comply. You, you achieve your goal to have the spa, some dollars have to be spent. I would go after the person who's negligent and say, make me whole. If you have to part with some dollars to correct it, then go after the person and say, make me whole. Or eat the cost yourself.
I respectfully disagree because the person who built it thought he was in compliance based on the GC's instruction. Would you not agree with that?
You're saying he instructed him.
We don't know. So, so no one is to blame, and if no one is to blame...
No, no, no. Someone is to blame, we just don't know who. But the point is, we're not here to tell, to advise you legally or otherwise what your remedy is.
I, I understand.
Okay, that's, that's not our issue. And I would just suggest to the rest of the board that we steer away from that.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just say that there is an alternative way to meet the owner's need, the applicant's needs of having a spa. And that is to become compliant.
Yeah, from our perspective, again, we're not blaming anybody. What I go back to is, who is responsible? From my end, I don't care about the money, whatever, that's not our, our thing. Who's responsible? And at the end of the day, you as the homeowner are responsible. And I, and I, I'd be, I'd be a little less concerned, like if it was just put there and then the shed built, I'd feel, you know, maybe you could, it's, it's more feasible that it was put there for a reason and maybe you thought it was the right place. But the fact that the shed was already there kind of leads me to think that this was a perfect place for you to put it, variance aside. That's what it seems like to me. It just was, this is the, it's hidden, it's, it's away from everybody, it's away from my neighbors, makes perfect sense. But it likely was put there because the shed was already there.
I could move, I could have moved originally the pool equipment a little bit further without moving the shed, and that would have been fine. But that was, that option was not brought to my attention because we were unaware that we were in violation by four feet. Whether it was an oversight of the property line from the measurement, I don't know. But let, let, let me just say, and here's where I am going to be passionate. Moving the pool equipment would place an undue amount of strain financially to, to move that. It would require pretty heavy equipment back and forth into the backyard to dig up that, that property, causing a lot of disruption in, in the neighborhood. You walked by my house many times. You know, it's not a pretty sight when you have, you know, machinery in the backyard. And it, it's, it's not such a small task from a labor perspective and a financial perspective.
I'm, I'm not a builder, but if it's four feet, why would you need heavy equipment? Am I wrong?
You have to dig up the entire, take a look at those plumbing plans where all, all those plumbing lines are going. You have to take apart the entire equipment, move it somewhere else in the backyard while they dig that entire area, redo the plumbing underground, then rehook it up and then place the pool equipment back.
Is, is there a cost that you're aware of? And I'm not asking whether it's a hardship for you, whether it's a thousand or 10,000. That's none of my business.
It's, it's not, it's not insignificant.
Right.
I mean, we're talking probably like $10,000 to, to make that happen.
Can I, I gotta, I gotta go back to, to my original question. And I guess maybe, John, is it just because it's a hot tub, you wouldn't put on the plans where the equipment would go?
We don't know why it wasn't on the plans.
I'm just cur, I mean, because, I mean, that's how this would have been avoided. Or at least you could say the guy didn't do what he was supposed to do because it's on the plans. And that's the problem. So I'm just, I'm just curious.
Well, because it was a hot tub, we, like, in the design of it, the location of the hot tub was fine. We really, I, like Mickey, I wasn't really thinking it was like a pool equipment. I was thinking it was something smaller. So usually, it's more like with a pool, usually you got a pool company that does the drawings and does, you know, does their pool part. So, uh, but it was kind of not, like, we weren't all thinking it was a pool. Like, it was more like a hot tub.
Mickey, if, if I wanted to build a hot tub tomorrow, and I, I need a permit, I assume, right? You for a hot tub? Okay. And I...
Also, you need approval from the Architecture Review Board.
Okay.
Who would also have jurisdiction over screening and stuff for pool equipment.
Would I, right, would I have to show that in plans?
You will now.
Should I have, should we have shown that? Or that wasn't, that didn't really...
Generally, with hot tubs, it was a non-issue because generally speaking, I mean, we've issued hundreds of permits for hot tubs. And I mean hundreds, maybe thousands in the 20 years I've been here. This is the first one I've seen with a detached equipment to this extent. It's usually right next to or under or part and parcel of the hot tub.
But, but if someone was going to do it tomorrow, that should be on the, it should have been on the plans.
It will be on the plans from here on out until the end of time. Yeah, you bet.
And it should have been.
If it was detached, if, if the equipment was intended to be detached, it would have had to have been put on the plans so we could review it for compliance with the zoning code. And so the ARB could approve whatever screening was, uh, was proposed.
So they didn't know that there was going to be a detached equipment?
I certainly didn't know.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who want to speak in favor of the application? We recognize three, I think it was three letters from neighbors in support of the application. Anyone want to speak against the application? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Harmon, 16 Hillendale Road. I don't think I have a lot that I have to add. I, I gather that you folks have all read the letter that I submitted. So I think you've gleaned most of the points from it as I, as I've heard you making them. But just to summarize a couple of things. I mean, I, I'm shocked as well that there was no equipment on the plans. The neighbors we just dealt with put in a pool and obviously, pool equipment was on the plan. So I'm finding that very surprising. And it almost sounds like it's something that has to go back to the Architectural Review Board because I also don't see that there's any screening or noise buffering or any of that, which is also required by the code. But having said that, you know, these legalization applications are becoming more and more and more frequent. They are the forgiveness trend as opposed to the permission trend. I think it's a terrible precedent. I think it does great damage to our village code that you guys work all the time at trying to enforce and to maintain the integrity of, and this vitiates that. I think that in this particular case, this homeowner had two of the most experienced professionals working with him in Ry Brook. I don't know whose fault it was, I don't know who did it. It says right on the face of their application that the contractor moved the equipment to where he did so that it would be farther away from the homeowner's terrace and less intrusive noise-wise. There's this throwaway that it's also better for the neighbors. I don't know. But it clearly was done for the benefit of the homeowners and without regard to the requirements of the code. There is no excuse for professionals who appear before these boards on a regular basis to have just let a pool contractor go off on his own, put in equipment... to have just let a pool contractor go off on his own, put in equipment, never look at it, never check it, never discuss with him where it's gonna go. I, you have to believe all of those things to arrive at a place where you can find this credible. I can't get there. There's always the same defense. It's a financial burden to move it. Let's not lose sight of the fact that we're talking about a spa. We are not talking about a food kitchen. We are not talking about people who need another bedroom for their son who's living at home. We're talking about a spa. And if it's another $10,000 to move the pool equipment where it should be to be code compliant, so be it. Who pays for it? Not your problem, not my problem. I think it's important that we maintain the integrity of these codes. I think it's important that word goes out in this community that you cannot just do whatever you want and then come back and get a rubber stamp legalization for what you've done. I think that's a huge mistake and I would hope that we start reversing that trend so that people first come and get permission and put in things that are compliant. It's not that hard. In this case, it's really not that hard. It's moving something four feet. It can absolutely be done. It could have been done in the first place. It can be remedied now. Thank you.
Okay, there being no other negative comments, kind of a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, we've, we've heard this, the positions on all sides. I again revert to the five factors that, that we looked at. And as I went through the five factors, clearly it's self-created, right? But it's not dispositive. Secondly, it's a substantial variance. Three, I believe there is a remedy to fix it, to fix it and to become code compliant and not come before the board. Does it affect the character of the neighborhood? Visually, no. But from a precedent point of view, there isn't, there is an issue of, of hiring.
Precedent really is a factor there, but.
I know, but, but the, it may not be one of the five, but precedence is something that comes before the, uh, the courts in terms of, of situations. I think that the argument that there's an environmental impact is, is not there. But I think three of the five factors are such that there is a problem. Such that I, I cannot support the application as, as it is given the situations that we, we have discussed. If you were to say that you have to tunnel the entire length to put that equipment in at that location from the base where it is installed, that's what, 25 feet, 30 feet maybe, whatever. To move it back four feet, okay, is not.
The same thing as doing the full 25 feet.
Exactly, exactly.
And I'm gonna add to, if you don't mind, that given the nature of the application and nature of the situation, I'm not even so sure that I'd be going the other way if it was the 25 feet.
Okay.
When you use the word precedent, are you using it as we're setting precedent or following precedent?
We don't want a precedent being set.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get the word out, if I might use that term. You know, we are on video and so the point, you don't want to make any one individual pay for the, this into the community. In other words, each application is unique. And as I look at this application, I see that it should have been picked up. And the fact that it wasn't picked up, to me, there's negligence. I would use the word negligent. It should have been picked up by the responsible professionals, including the person who installed the equipment. Alright, so therefore, to me, the precedent is it should have been picked up. It wasn't picked up. There is a responsibility to, to make up for that negligence. How, as you pointed out, it's not our problem to worry about those things. It is a cost to the applicant. There's no question about it. There is a cost. But in, in this particular case, I think it's reasonable to expect. Now, I'm not saying everybody should do that. I'm 78 years old. I had a sewer problem. I picked up a pick. I went to the street and I dug a 25 foot trench, four feet down, two feet wide with a pick. Okay? To find the sewer line. I then hired a local plumber to come in, cut out the cast iron pipe and to replace it with a fiberglass or whatever kind of pipe it is. I can go in that backyard and trench four feet with a pick, okay? Going down four feet in much less time. So I don't think I need massive heavy equipment to go in the back to do it.
And again, I'm, I know I'm keep saying.
I think it's reasonable.
To me, it's not even the point.
The, the concern I had, you know, was the equipment thing. The, the concern I have of the fact, the reason I ask precedent is that interestingly, a number of decisions that I was reading in the application materials today from 10 years ago, 15 years ago, were denied. And the reason they were denied was one factor. Is there another way you can do this? And, and I, I just noticed that that was usually a big, big requirement that, that if it's not met, it, something was denied. And, and that's the troubling factor that I have. I never want someone to have to pay that is not personally responsible. You're not overseeing it. But, but when I look at the fact, just the factors, what we're required by law to look at, the fact that you can claw it back even at a cost makes it almost impossible for me to, to grant the variance because that factor we have to follow, even if I wanted to, which I do, I want to grant it. I couldn't based on my responsibilities, based on that one factor, because there is a way to do it. And that's the challenge that I have. If I could see a way around that, that to me is the biggest challenge here for us.
Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, I do, it's, it's a shame. You know, the fact that this, this is setting precedent for the future because this has never been seen before. So I'm sure nobody did this deliberately knowing that it needs to be 10 feet and they measured out and they said it was six feet and just said, eh, you know, we can get by because ultimately a survey had to be done and this, that's how this got picked up. So these guys are in, you know, lack of better terms. They're not dumb enough to realize that they're gonna be able to get this one by without having a survey and this being picked up. So, you know, I, I truly believe it was an innocent mistake. But the oversight by someone, whether it's the general contractor, as the person over, doing the oversight or the person building, not asking the questions of, is it okay to do it here? I mean, it's, it's just, you know, somebody dropped the ball big time. And, and again, I don't think it was intentional saying, we knew, we know it's, should be 10 feet. We're gonna make this six feet. It's just somebody dropped the ball. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's a shame because there'll be some costs associated with it and, and, you know, hopefully somebody will make the homeowner, and like you said, we can't make suggestions, but make them, make them whole.
Cool.
I have, I've said my piece.
Okay. Okay, uh, we, uh, you want me to read the resolution?
Okay, is there, I mean, so once we vote, right? I mean, this is denied, then it's, this is, then what happens? They gotta.
Well, Mickey, what are, what are the applicant's options?
Well, once it's denied, the applicant.
If it's denied.
Has, if it's denied, the, the applicant has the option of either moving the pool equipment or filing Article 78 against the board.
And there's a third option. They can, you know, let's say they're not going to move it the full six feet and they need to seek another variance. You know, they, they're not prohibited from coming back to the board with a new variance proposal. This request, this specific amount of variance would be ultimately denied and they'd be prohibited from asking for it again.
So this isn't like some of the other ones where they didn't want, you know, the applicant wouldn't want us to vote on it, have it denied and then start over. So then they come back like, like the applicant before. We didn't vote on it last time because we probably would have said no. And then they would have to start from scratch. Then they came back, made some adjustments. It's something like that.
I mean, it is possible if you want to ask the app, if the board thinks that there's a way to maybe not move it the full 10 feet from the property line, but you move it. So it's still in line with the shed, but maybe it's now seven feet from the property line. The variance is only three feet. You know, that would be the only reason to send the applicant back to redo it.
This is one of the few that I, I think it's like an all or nothing.
Yeah, I agree. The applicant does have the option of withdrawing the application and becoming compliant.
Well, one of the problems is your, your permits expired. It's been expired for a year. Expired in 2021. And we'd like to get this closed, so we don't want this to drag. So what's your proposal? Already heard that the board isn't interested in considering you're moving it so it's seven feet or eight feet or nine feet. They want it 10 feet, which is code compliant. So what would you be considering?
Considering that, that part of the responsibility lies with the town as well for not picking up the, the fact that the pool equipment was not shown on the original plan.
So how is that the village's fault? How do we know it's, it's not gonna be modular?
I wasn't aware that was even, I, I, look, I, you know, look, I'm not going to plead ignorance, but you know, ultimately the homeowner is to blame ultimately, right?
The reason we hire professional contractors is because we don't have that expertise.
That's correct.
And therefore you rely on your contractors who you pay handsomely to do their job, to do it the right way. Okay, and, and in this particular case, it was not done the right way. Okay, and I don't think it's the village's responsibility. I'm not so sure that I would say it's, it's your responsibility because a lot of people come into Ry Brook and they, they don't know what that thick building code looks like, but it's enormous. And there's no way anyone in this village, maybe with the exception of the compliance officers, understands the full ramifications of the code. But one thing a contractor does know is that there are bulk standards, setback ratios. And, and John will, will attest to the fact that, I mean, he's, he probably has nightmares about bulk standards. You know, uh, you know, throughout, throughout his day, that's probably what he, he, you know, he worries about. So, uh, it's not, uh, it's not a case of, of blaming. It's a question of, of, we want you to have your equipment. We want you to enjoy your equipment. We only ask that it be code compliant. And it's reasonable in this particular case, the unique situation is such that it's doable. It's doable. And, and it, it is gonna cost, it costs you a lot of money to do those renovations for sure. But you do want to enjoy that equipment. And the way to do that is to just move that equipment the four feet. Uh, whatever it takes to get the, to become code compliant. So I don't think, John, it, it makes sense.
No, I would only think if I was wanting to file it, we lost it, then maybe pull it. But it makes no, like, we've already filed for it, so it makes no difference whether. It's better to be denied.
Yeah, and again, this is semantics, but you know, I kind of want to use the right words. I don't blame you at all. I think though, if we deny the variance, you're responsible. Right? It's your responsibility. And, and I think that's a kind of key distinction because you, you have whatever remedies you want or you can take. But again, I don't blame a homeowner. I don't blame someone who wouldn't know. But the buck has to stop. I mean, we, we have no choice. You know, we have no jurisdiction over the contractor or the then, you know, subcontractor, whoever did it. We can only rule on this variance and that's your burden.
Okay, alright, let me read the resolution. Whereas application has, application has been made to the zoning board by Jan Zissler and Janis Zissler. The applicants for swimming pool, filter, heater, pump, setback variance of four feet where swimming pool filters, heaters and pumps must be located underground or buffered to minimize noise and located no less than 10 feet from the property line pursuant to village code 244-7.c in connection with the proposed legalization of swimming pool slash spa filter and heater equipment placement associated with building permit number 20-125 issued on July 24th, 2020 to extend rear patio with new stone walls, fireplace, hot tub, construct new roof over existing outdoor patio on property located at 15 Woodland Drive in an R25 zoning district on the east side of Woodland Drive approximately 783 feet from the intersection of Beachwood Circle and Woodland Drive. Set premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Ry Brook as parcel ID number 135.36-1-38. And whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on January 3rd, 2023, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on January 3rd, 2023. Whereas the proposed action is a type two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern and upon considering each of the factors set forth at section 250-13, section G, part two, items 2A through E of the Ry Brook Code finds the variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicants to pursue that does not require the variance. Three, the variance is quantitatively numerical, numerically substantial, but not aesthetically substantial. Four, the variance will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved that said application, and as I indicated earlier, is hereby provisionally either granted or denied on the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant, applicants have paid in full all application consultant fees incurred by the village and connects you with the review of this application. Okay, we comfortable with that? Okay, okay, Steve is excused. Glenn?
No.
Jamie?
No.
Joel?
No.
Don, no. Application denied, four noes, zero nays, a yes, and one excused. Okay? Alright, and the only thing I can hope is the viewing public understands that when you bring in a contractor, there are certain responsibilities for the contractor to know the building code.
Can I just ask that you just repeat my options at this point? Where do I go from here?
You want to do that, Mickey?
You, 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 you move the pool equipment? Or?
The filing of something.
An Article 78.
Suing the village, taking us to Supreme Court.
And Drew, why don't you tell them what the time limit is on that?
If you'd like to take us to Supreme Court through an Article 78, it's 30 days to file. That might cost more than moving the pool equipment, but it is an option. Mickey, is a building permit required to move the equipment?
What I'm gonna ask the applicant to do is to send me an email tomorrow and request an extension to the permit to give you time to do whatever it is you decide you're gonna do. And I'll give you as much time as you need. I have no desire to serve you violations. I have no desire to bring you into court. I have no desire to find you for an expired permit. I want to help you figure this out. Send me an email requesting a reasonable extension and we'll figure it out.
Do it before the end of the week or he's gone.
Yeah, that's right. I'm out here Friday.
I'll give you a.
Do it tomorrow, Doc.
Mickey, you give him the cell phone number?
And the, and when Mickey says issue violations, that would be for Town Justice Court. So not Supreme Court, but Mickey's a reasonable guy.
Okay, the next applications, a series of applications. Okay, the next applications, a series of applications, and I'm going to ask village council to assist me in aggregating these into somehow one. So this is ZBA 22-001, ZBA 22-002, dash 003, dash 0037. And, okay.
Just out of curiosity, Don, why wouldn't these all be under one?
I just think it was an administrative call to put it multiple, but I think it can be consolidated, that's why I'm asking village council to help me find a way, because some of these are not as significant as others.
Yeah.
You know, I think this is a straightforward process, you know, so I'd like to expedite it as quickly as possible.
We don't have another hour or so?
Yeah, I don't want to tear anything down.
I could answer that for you, Jamie.
Absolutely.
These are four separate permits spaced over the last 60 years or so. One of them is from 1945, one is from the 60s, from the 70s. These were all permits that were issued that were never closed out, and they're, it's all stuff that's been built in the past. And that's where we are here tonight, pretty much. I'm Miss Langworth.
So please introduce yourself.
Francesca Langworth, Lemon Division Street, Ry Brook.
Okay, now, you have all these things, normally the applicant comes in and tells us why they need the variances, so.
Well, I didn't even know I needed these were even opened. I was selling the home to my daughter, my son-in-law were buying the house, they applied for a mortgage, and this all popped up through the title search.
Okay.
If I was aware of this, I would have done it 50, 60 years ago, I bought it 53 years ago, so.
There's, this is not untypical of some of the things we've seen.
Yeah.
Normally, they surface at the time of sale, when a title search is done, and all the skeletons are unearthed. The options are very clear in cases like this. We either say to the owner, the applicant, tear everything down and become code compliant. In this particular case, you know, I think that that's not going to happen. I don't, you know, I can't speak for the entire board, but, you know, I think that these are things that were done in a culture that is different from the culture of Ry Brook today. Things are much tighter, and, you know, there's all sorts of ways to capture these things, but it isn't foolproof, and it isn't always going to work. So in this particular case, you have a sale pending, and the remedy then, Mickey, would be if all of these variances were granted, what would be the applicant's next step?
Well, the next step would be, I guess we would, inspections would ensue, and hopefully COs would be issued, unless there was some corrective work that needed to take place to bring whatever it is we're looking at up to the current life safety code with respect to smoke and carbon monoxide detection and things like that.
Yeah, so, you know, you're not out of the woods, so to speak, you know, you do have to be compliant with safety conditions, and.
Definitely.
That's only going to, the reason we have closing permits and, you know, after-the-fact visits is to make sure things were done right. Which is why the previous application was unearthed.
Right.
So the next step is not necessarily going to be smooth sailing, hopefully the work that was done is done correctly, and you don't have any further issues. So Drew, I'm going to ask you, what is the simplest way to deal with this series of four applications?
Well, if the board believes that their evaluation of the five factors will be the same for all four permit categories, then what I can do is I can read the variances necessary, which would be the first whereas paragraph on each of the resolutions, the board can then go through the five factors, and you can vote on them without me repeating.
Okay.
That way I can, you can, I'll spare your voice, Don.
So you.
We could go one at a time.
You'd read, and then we do five factors four times?
No, no, no. I'll read.
All, all the variances, and then you do the, yeah, then you do the five factors together once.
Okay.
On all the, there's quite a few, but on all.
Because I said of reading it five times, I thought once, and then each, if we can't combine them, we don't have to hear your voice more than once with the main body of it, was what I was saying, but if we can combine them, that's even better.
Yeah, the problem is that the whereas clauses are quite long, you know, so Drew, you can read real fast.
Okay. I might be taking them out of order from what's online. We're going to start.
We're going to start with the project that was the legalization of the existing wood deck and the enclosed porch. So this requires a front yard setback variance of four feet, where the minimum required front yard setback is 20 feet pursuant to the village code. They also need a single side yard setback variance of 0.5 feet, where the minimum required single side yard setback is six feet pursuant to village code, a single side yard setback variance of six feet, where the minimum required single side yard setback is six feet, so I guess it's zero, a rear yard setback variance of 4.5 feet, where the minimum required rear yard setback is 30 feet, a deck coverage variance of 2.6%, where the maximum allowable deck coverage is 3.5%, a gross floor area variance of 76 square feet, where the maximum allowable gross floor area is 4,044 square feet, a total impervious coverage variance of 561.4 square feet, where the maximum allowable total impervious coverage is 2,258.6 square feet. Moving on to the next project, oh, and all that pertained to building permit 74 issued on December 15, 1945.
Okay, and I'll just editorially comment, those are substantial, okay? All right, next.
Next one we have pertains to building permit 2332 issued on April 11, 1979. This pertains to the legalization of the second-story dormer. This requires a single yard setback variance of 2.7 feet, where the minimum required single side yard setback is six feet, a total of two side yard setback variance of 0.5 feet, where the minimum required total of two side yard setbacks is 16 feet. Moving on to the third project that we have, pertains to building permit 2110 issued on June 15, 1976, pertaining to the rear one-story addition. This requires a 2.7-foot single side yard setback variance for the rear one-story addition, where the minimum required single side yard setback is six feet, and a 0.5-foot total of two side yard setback variance for the rear one-story addition, where the minimum required total of two side yard setback is 16 feet. And finally, for the fourth, fourth one? Sorry, I got my mix up. We are, we're on, we didn't, thank you. So this one, final one, pertains to building permit number 940 issued on July 23, 1962, pertaining to the two-car detached garage. This requires a side yard accessory building setback variance of 0.4 feet, where the minimum required side yard setback for a detached accessory building is five feet, and a rear yard accessory building setback variance of 2.2 feet, where the minimum required rear yard setback for the detached accessory building is five feet.
Okay, and a public hearing was held on the 3rd of January of this year, a type II.
I know no one's here, any, just for the, for sake of the record, asking for public comment.
Okay, anyone want to speak in favor of the application? There being none. Anyone want to speak against the application? There being none. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved, second.
Public hearing is closed, okay. Quickly, these factors will apply to all of them. The variances will not create an adverse impact, the benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicants that does not require the variances, three, the variances are quantitatively numerically substantial, four, the variances will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and five, the need for the variance is self-created, right? Self-created, okay. All right, there being said, no permit, forget that one. Okay, Steve is excused. By the way, does anyone want to speak at all to this? No? Okay, yeah, happy? Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Don? Yes, application approved for yeses, zero nays, one excused. Okay, once again, thank you, Mickey, for this.
Yes, Mickey.
Until, oh, yeah, you got to pay all the fees, or no permits will be issued or closed.
You're lucky the buyers didn't walk.
It's true.
You're right.
All in the family.
It's all in the family, that's why, otherwise, yes, they would have.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, there are none.
There are none, but I.
We'll have some for next month.
Nice job, Drew.
All right, thank you all.